And I was happy in your eyes
And I was happy in your eyes
And I was loving you so much Don't wanna feel blue I hate this pain I only dream you will come back I close my eyes and I can feel Those lonely days you were with me You always say I will be there For helping you forever And I was happy in your eyes And I was loving you so much Don't wanna feel blue I hate this pain I only dream you will come back I close my eyes And I can feel Those lonely days You were with me You always say I will be there For helping you Forever Do we come back? Do we come back? Do we come back? Do we come back? Now all alone I think of you You're in my soul what can I do? What can I do? Inside my mind I just recall That only thing that is your love And I was happy in your eyes And I was loving you so much Don't wanna feel blue I hate this pain I only dream you will come back And I was happy in your eyes And I was loving you so much Don't wanna feel blue I hate this pain I only dream you will come back Do we come back? Do we come back? Do we come back? Do we come back? Do we come back?
Y'all wanna play house some more? Say yeah! Y'all wanna play house some more? Say yeah! Here we go! Say yeah! Say yeah! Here we go! Here we go! Here we go! Say yeah! Say yeah! Here we go! Here we go! Here we go! Here we go! Y'all wanna play house some more? Say yeah! Y'all wanna play house some more? Say yeah! Here we go!
There's a voice inside, never stop to cry I can hear it when you're not by my side Coming from my soul like a desperate call Just a touch of you can't get it out from me And I'm wishing that if you're coming back She will find peace as somebody for me There's a desperate call coming from my soul And I fear that my heart now is falling down I gotta be so strong Gotta learn to stay with me alone Gotta run away Gotta stop the dance control that's making me insane There's a voice inside, never stop to cry I can hear it when you're not by my side Coming from my soul like a desperate call Just a touch of you can't get it out from me And I'm wishing that if you're coming back She will find peace as somebody for me There's a desperate call coming from my soul And I fear that my heart now is falling down I gotta be so strong Gotta learn to stay with me alone Gotta run away Gotta stop the dance control that's making me insane I wanna hold you tonight Wanna lose myself in your arms Make love to you so right You think that it's tough not to show who you are You think it's enough to not go too far But if you believe that you could love me Baby, why don't you give into me? I know you're still young and you like to hang out Your friends cling to know what it's all about They tell you it's fun to love and then run Losing your good things, that's what just begun I wanna hold you tonight Wanna lose myself in your arms Make love to you so right So right So right See how I love you, love you, I do It's all in your hands, it's all up to you And if you believe how sweet it could be Just take a chance and come home with me For the rest of my life Wanna light your heart like a star This feeling is oh so right So right For the rest of my life Wanna light your heart like a star This feeling is oh so right
Your eyes was me in the darkness While your voice reached my steps Your voice broke the silence Sun going down, dying without you Nobody knows the love I see in your eyes Missing sadly You are dancing in the dark Watching the suns fall Falling like the moon Missing sadly You are dancing in the dark Missing inside my heart Falling like the moon We're dancing in love Satisfied my soul lies in my heart We're dancing in love Satisfied my soul lies in my heart We're dancing in love Oh Your eyes was me in the darkness While your voice reached my steps Your hand broke the silence Sun going down, dying without you And I'm crazy baby, I don't wanna leave you Missing sadly You are dancing in the dark Watching the suns fall Falling like the moon Missing sadly You are dancing in the dark Missing inside my heart Falling like the moon We're dancing in love We're dancing in love Satisfied my soul lies in my heart We're dancing in love Satisfied my soul lies in my heart We're dancing in love Oh
I know you told me not to ask where you have been I know you told me not to try Do you understand the way you live your life at night? But don't you see you make me cry? So now I have left you, I know it broke your heart But I prefer to be alone I hope you feel the pain I've always felt with you I know I'll make it on my own I touch your skin, I smell the sin Your eyes are lying I touch your skin, I smell the sin My love for you is dying I touch your skin, I smell the sin Your eyes are lying I touch your skin, I smell the sin My love for you is dying I know you told me not to ask where you have been I know you told me not to try Do you understand the way you live your life at night? But don't you see you make me cry? I touch your skin, I smell the sin Your eyes are lying I touch your skin, I smell the sin My love for you is dying
How can I make you want me? How can I make it for real? I wanna love you forever I hope that you feel the same I'd give everything for you To make you wanna stay I'll give everything I have I love you more than I can say Let me love you tonight And I'll make you feel alright I know with my heart I want to be with you Oh baby, let me love you tonight And I'll make you feel alright In a million years I won't be over you Let me love you tonight How can I make you want me? How can I make it for real?
How can I make it for real? I wanna love you forever, I hope that you feel the same. I'd give everything for you, to make you wanna stay. I'll give everything I have, I love you more than I can say. Let me love you tonight, and I'll make you feel alright. I know in my heart I want to be with you. Oh baby, let me love you tonight, and I'll make you feel alright. In a million years, I won't be over you. Let me love you tonight. I know you don't want to be without my love. And if you're gonna kiss me, you know that you have to stay. I'd give everything for you, to make you wanna stay. I'll give everything I have, I love you more than I can say. Let me love you tonight, and I'll make you feel alright. I know in my heart I want to be with you. Oh baby, let me love you tonight, and I'll make you feel alright. In a million years, I won't be over you. Let me love you tonight. I wanna love you. 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 But only in my dreams, but only in my dreams, but only in my dreams, but only in my dreams. I wanna love you, I wanna make you feel alright. Cause I know in my heart I wanna be with you. Oh baby, let me love you tonight, and I'll make you feel alright. I know in my heart I want to be with you, I wanna be with you. Let me love you tonight, and I'll make you feel alright. In a million years, I won't be over you. Let me love you tonight. Look at me, really was not easy, but I can breathe. And I'm so grateful, cause I can see. I am free, to do exactly what I see. Come with me, to a place where we can be. Ooh, I wanna touch the sky, I wanna fly so high. Ooh, I wanna hold you, I wanna love you tonight. Ooh, I wanna touch the sky, I wanna fly so high. Ooh, I wanna satisfy, I wanna make you cry. Follow me, to a place where we can be absolutely free. To be exactly what you wanna be, completely. Lose control, that's when I need you, I'm gonna give you the key. To set your heart and spirit free, yeah. Ooh, I wanna touch the sky, I wanna fly so high. Ooh, I wanna hold you, I wanna love you tonight. Ooh, I wanna touch the sky, I wanna fly so high. Ooh, I wanna satisfy, I wanna make you cry. I know what I want, and I know that I need it right now. Gonna take you on a journey to a faraway place now. Gonna take you on a journey to a faraway place now. Ooh, I wanna touch the sky, I wanna fly so high. Ooh, I wanna hold you, I wanna love you tonight. Ooh, I wanna touch the sky, I wanna fly so high. Ooh, I wanna satisfy, I wanna make you cry. Oh, like a bird in the sky, just you and I. I'm gonna fly like a bird in the sky, just you and I. We're gonna fly like a bird in the sky, just you and I. I wanna love you, I wanna make you high. I wanna give you everything that you desire. I wanna love you, I wanna make you high. I wanna give you everything that you desire.
I was walking down my way to home, thinking of my days that stand around. There was nothing around, nothing making me proud. All these people inside, I feel so wrong. And they're showing the deal you cannot force. He says that it's free, and I'm not gonna say it. Walking in the park, I saw you so young, I saw you so cute. Flesh into my heart, I need to know. All of you, what's your name? What is your number? Don't be afraid. All of you, don't be scared, ever and ever. All of you, what's the key? Please tell me that your heart is free. All of you, tell me more, ever and ever. Will you close the door? As I look at your call, it runs away. I can hear in my mind the words unsaid. Know you're there from my heart, I don't wanna get hurt. And you promise me I will hear from you. I don't wanna believe it will be true. Know that it's in my heart, I don't wanna get hurt. Walking in the park, I saw you so young, I saw you so cute. Flesh into my heart, I need to know. All of you, what's your name? What is your number? Don't be afraid. All of you, don't be scared, ever and ever. All of you, what's the key? Please tell me that your heart is free. All of you, tell me more, ever and ever. Will you close the door?
Let me tell you something about love, I'm gonna show you now. About crystal eyes, about heaven's door. About sex and imagination, peace and harmony, the way you are. On the way I find you. Tinker, you're always gonna be with me. Tinker, you're always gonna be on my own. Tinker, I'm here, go so. That's my body, my soul, that's for you babe. Now we're gonna start a life on my arms again. Looking for it, we'll be flying across the land. All the miracles you're seeing, will be only for your hands. It's a present for the woman, it belongs, belongs to love. Tinker, I'm always gonna be with you. Tinker, you're always gonna be with me. Tinker, you're always gonna be on my own. Tinker, I'm here, go so.
If you need Need a one day lover Just call eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. One day lover. One day lover Eight Seven Six Five Four Three Two One I'm a love machine, come I'm a love machine in town The best you can get Get a piece Get a piece If you need Need a one day lover Just call eight Seven Six Five Four Three Two One I'm a love machine, come
Sitting here, thinking of when we first met Night, I can't ever forget Dreaming of how it's just you and me I knew it would be heavenly To have met someone who cares for me And now my days aren't always crowded When I'm thinking of you And now my nights are not so lonely When I'm here with you And now my days aren't always crowded When I'm thinking of you And now my nights are not so lonely When I'm here with you Sitting here, thinking of when we first met Night, I can't ever forget Dreaming of how it's just you and me I knew it would be heavenly To have met someone who cares for me And now my days aren't always crowded When I'm thinking of you And now my nights are not so lonely When I'm here with you And now my days aren't always crowded When I'm thinking of you Mm-hmm Uh-huh Yeah Opened a new world to me Something told me, I found this still alive Dreaming of how it's just you and me I knew it would be heavenly To have met someone who cares for me And now my days aren't always crowded When I'm thinking of you And now my nights are not so lonely When I'm here with you And now my days aren't always crowded When I'm thinking of you And now my nights are not so lonely When I'm here with you And now my days aren't always crowded When I'm thinking of you And now my nights are not so lonely When I'm here with you And now my days aren't always crowded When I'm thinking of you And now my nights are not so lonely When I'm here with you
I want you I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I want you I just want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I want you I just want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I want you I just want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you Go bad I don't know what you're looking for And a broken heart is all I got I want you